Okay, good evening. Grateful for the people who have joined us tonight. And if you're watching this recording after the fact, this is a wonderful opportunity to get some really good information about what is going on with our PUD's right-of-way expansion. So as our panelists this evening, we have the general manager of PUD, Paul Hooser. Thank you for being here tonight, Paul. Before he begins, we'll just have our usual reminder that this is a supportive environment where all opinions and viewpoints are respected and we ask our questions and respond in just really respectful ways. And so we appreciate you abiding by those guidelines. So Paul, we'll just go ahead and turn it over to you and let you give all that good information that we all need to know about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jill. I appreciate the opportunity to share some information on this. I'm going to ask to share my screen here. I think you'll probably have to give me permission on that, right? So you tell me if you see the WRAP PowerPoint.
I do.
Okay, I'm gonna get into presentation mode. Whoa. Do you see it now?
I do not.
Yeah, I think I hit something that... Yeah, let me go here. Let me try that again. It says you disabled it. Can you... Let's see, I'll ask to share again.
Okay.
Okay, can you see it now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, this thing's a little finicky when you start sharing. So WRAP, the acronym W R A P, stands for Wildfire Risk Reduction Reliability and Asset Protection Project. Next is a map of the project for those that aren't that familiar with our service territory. And the focus of the project is not exclusive, but the focus of the project is federally managed ground. And the reason being, that is the highest danger, the highest fire danger areas we have in our system. There is private land included in the project, but the majority of the land is Forest Service and BLM managed ground. The purpose of the project, well, to reduce the risk of wildfire by expanding the right-of-way and increased vegetation management. And I guess it makes sense to preface this by saying, we've always wanted to be as fire safe as possible. But California's strict liability standard, which exists in California and no other state, means that any fire that our power lines are involved in might have to be paid for by the PUD regardless of whether we were at fault. The example I use, because it's an extreme example, but it's true, is if a drunk driver is driving down Highway 299, they veer off the road, they hit one of our power poles, they knock it on the ground, it starts a fire that's $100 million in damage, the PUD could literally get the entire bill for $100 million, which means all of the PUD's customers would end up paying whatever we would settle that for. Obviously, our size utility does not have the ability to pay $100 million claim, but any fire could literally bankrupt the PUD, given California's strict liability standard. In every other state in the nation, there's what's called a negligent standard, where if the utility is at fault, if it does something wrong, then the utility has to pay. And California utilities don't have to be at fault in order to be on the hook for huge wildfire damage claims. And you know, another thing I know I've talked about a lot, mind people, of the Helena Fire, which is about 22,000 acres, resulted in $138 million in claims for the PUD. That was settled for our insurance limits, which at the time were $10 million. And the other important, really critical thing is we no longer have wildfire liability insurance. Because of the Helena Fire and strict liability in California, no insurance company will insure us for wildfire liability. So it makes all these points under the purpose that much more critical. Obviously, we do want to protect our infrastructure. If a fire occurred, you know, the car fire is a great example. If that had burned through major parts of our system, it could have destroyed hundreds of miles of power line. And even if it were a lightning-started fire, or in that case, a vehicle pulling off the side of the road starting the fire, if we lost that much infrastructure, we literally don't have the financial resources to replace it. So that's another big benefit of this project is a wider right-of-way that even if a fire starts for another reason, we have the space to protect our existing infrastructure so that we can continue to serve the citizens of Trinity County. The third bullet there is reliability. You know, with a wider right-of-way, particularly those winter storm outages will be much less frequent than they are now. Improved transmission line access by road improvements, that's mostly a WAPA. WAPA is the Western Area Power Administration. That's mostly a WAPA desire for their 60 KV line that serves Weaverville, Lewiston, Douglas City, and Hayfork. It serves about 94% of our load. We're totally reliant on it. It comes from the dam to a little substation just outside of Weaverville, on the Redding side of Weaverville. Folks probably see it when they go to Redding and may not even think about it. And then to protect the health and safety of the community and the biological and natural resources, if everybody that's ridden through that car fire knows that, you know, there's no spotted owls. It's a devastating impact to habitat. And we also think that 130-foot wide easements offer opportunities for fire protection, you know, backfire operations for any kind of fire that just don't exist with the really meager 20-foot wide easement that we have now. Here are some of the stats on the WRAP project. So within the project is approximately 217 miles of utility right-of-way. And that's ours that we want to expand from 20 feet to up to 130 feet. In some areas, you know, it depends on topography, vegetation species, but up to 130 feet. WAPA's mile is... WAPA's line is about 18 miles that runs from the dam here to the edge of Weaverville. And they also want to expand it. It's already 80 feet, and they want to move it to 130 feet. The other thing we want to do, the third bullet, is, you know, with the 20-foot easement, right now our lines are centered in the easement. We have 10 feet on either side of the center line of that easement, basically the pole line. But with up to 130-foot easement, it'll make sense to, where there's steep terrain, to have most of that 130 feet on the uphill side of the power line. Most folks probably don't pay attention to this, but there's places where you can stand at the base of one of our poles, and it's so steep that on the downhill side, if you're 20 feet away from the pole, the tops of the trees are below the level of the line. So it obviously makes more sense to grab more of that easement where it actually has some impacts, some positive impact on the system. Here's a short-term maintenance. WAPA, again, they do have some road access issues where they really want to be able to make some improvement. We're not really proposing. We're just going to maintain the existing access roads that we have. And we're in there on a regular basis doing vegetation clearance. We do plan to use a combination of mechanical, manual, and herbicidal control methods. I know herbicides are a hot-button issue in Trinity. I'm happy, actually, to talk to anybody about them and how critical they are to making this project realistic and cost-effective. We do hope to use controlled burns for vegetation removal. I know the Forest Service has issued comments to us that that is certainly their preferred method. I'll be candid, the liability risk with burning any vegetation piles is so high that we would never consider doing it ourselves. But we hope to have some cooperation from other agencies, you know, potentially convict crews or other cow fire resources that can burn that vegetation. You know, what can't be shipped out? I also mentioned this point. It's not in the slide, but we've applied for a cow fire grant for vegetation removal. We're asking for $12 million. We'll know whether or not we get that by December of this year. It obviously makes a huge difference in the cost of the project. Interestingly, the reason for $12 million, I've actually heard the criticism of the project that, you know, we're doing this as a kind of a hidden agenda to do a big lumber sale. But we think the $12 million is what it will cost us if we get to capture some of the timber value. In other words, if we're allowed to capture the timber value, we think it will cost an additional $12 million to clear this right-of-way. And of course, it would be more. Our estimate, rough estimate, is about 10,000 board feet per acre. And I know some folks want to hear me say that, think we're just sizing up a timber sale, but nobody does a timber purchase and loses $12 million on it. And that's essentially what we'd be doing. And we don't know if we're going to get the cow fire grant, but we're certainly hopeful. Yeah, I guess I jumped the gun on this slide a little bit. But yeah, we're hoping to do timber sale contracts with the U.S. Forest Service Bureau of Land Management, Bureau of Reclamation. Reclamation has a very tiny amount of property on this. And if private landowners desire to have vegetation removed, and that's another thing to emphasize, we will not use eminent domain. Any vegetation we remove from private property owners, it will be a negotiation where both PUD and the private property owner agree. But by doing SEQA on these parcels in advance, it does help facilitate timber sales if private property owners are so inclined. Again, we're not going to force those things on private property owners. And the reality is, while we have risk on private land, it's not nearly as great as the risk on public land, mainly because most of the public land, our lines are far away from anybody that could see a fire starting and fire suppression resources. So there's a much greater chance that any contact with a power line and any fire that results from that, it gets out of control quickly. Where the private property, that's just not the case. The other big thing in private property is the fuel loads are much lower. We figure an average of 140 trees per acre on private ground and maybe 700 trees per acre on public ground. So we'll go to the next one here. Yeah, long-term right-of-way maintenance. So part of this project is preparing a comprehensive operation maintenance plan so that the agencies know, you know, exactly what we're doing and what areas. There will certainly be sensitive areas where we have to be very careful or very limited in our maintenance activities. But the flip side of that is, the majority areas won't be sensitive. And by identifying those and having a known implant up front, it actually facilitates our ability to do maintenance work. And that's one of the goals of the project. Right-of-way maintenance costs. Obviously, it wouldn't make sense to clear this ground and then not maintain it. So this, because there's been a lot of question on herbicides, this slide kind of lays out, here's the difference in cost. So 3,400 acres, keep in mind, some of that's already cleared because we have an existing 20-foot right-of-way. But the majority of it, I think it's another 2,800 acres if we were to go to the full 130 feet, which we want everywhere, but for budgeting purposes or discussion purposes. But to maintain that 3,400 acres with herbicides, we think is about $600,000 a year. And that assumes a cost to treat of $700 per acre in a four-year cycle. So ideally, we'd do 1/4 of that every year on a rotating basis. To do the same treatment by mechanical means would cost $4.6 million annually. And that assumes a cost of $4,100 per acre, which is probably on the low side and maybe on the low side by quite a bit. And a three-year treatment cycle, because with mechanical, your regrowth is much faster. And both the three-year and the 4,100 are probably conservative numbers. I imagine that could go quite a bit higher. There are also, and this is being studied now, a lot of folks, and I could see where you'd say intuitively, "Well, you know, maybe I'd like to pay the extra money." To put that in perspective, that's... Those costs are below. You know, mechanical treatment is about $600 per year per Trinity PUD customer. And herbicidal treatment is about $60 per year. It's about a 40% rate increase. So that's a huge... And that's based on these conservative numbers. But the other thing I've learned as I've gotten more involved in the project is that there are major environmental impacts of mechanical treatment. If you think about it, you're getting in there with heavy equipment, masticators that basically just chew up this brush. You don't do anything with it, obviously, because it's chewed up on the ground versus, you know, after clearing and treating with herbicide, you can use pre-emergents that literally keep some species from coming up. So there's just huge environmental benefits to herbicidal treatments, which I might add... So the process, you know, we're in NEPA and SEQA, the National Environmental Policy Act and the California Environmental Equality Act. This NEPA document, I mean, the reports, the studies that are underway are incredible. You know, going in, I knew this was an extensive process, but now that I'm more heavily involved, I'm actually amazed at everything that's being studied. The species that have been identified, the cultural resource sites that have been identified. I know the agencies are thrilled with the data that our project has given them, that they really would have had no other way to acquire. These are environmental issues. This is not completely inclusive, but these are, you know, big environmental issues that are being studied as part of the NEPA and the SEQA process. I won't read through all of those. Scoping comments. You know, we had two Zoom scoping meetings. And during those, we received 16 verbal comments. They were reasonably well-attended. There was, you know, a few members of the public. There were agencies represented on those. And that's reflected in what you see there. Two agency comments, seven organizational comments, and seven from individuals. But it was good feedback. It was... The county was represented on those as well. I think both Kim from Planning and Rick Tippett both attended at least one of those. We also received 664 written comments. And when we first got these, it was kind of shocking to me that we would get that many comments until I asked our contractor to kind of delve into the source of the comments. So of those 664 comments, 614 of them were form letters. And Epic on its website had put up a piece and done a, you know, a blast email to their email list, which I have no idea how big it is. I'm sure it's huge. But that form letter was pre-populated into an email such that folks that got the email from Epic, all they had to do was type in their name and where they were from and hit send, and it automatically sent a letter. So, you know, 664 comments sounds like a ton, but 614 of them were form letters. 10 of them were agency letters, seven organizational comments. And we had 33 individual comments. So I was very curious. I asked our contractor to go through and identify, you know, how many of the form letters were from Trinity County? Another 614, only 22, or about 3.5%. And it's not that folks from, you know, Alaska or Florida or Colorado, we got comments from those places, can't comment. Obviously, they can. But it's important for me to know, you know, if you're here living with the fire and provide an individual comment, that's interesting to me versus a form letter comment from somebody out of state that doesn't have to live with a fire danger that exists now here. So that's why I wanted those statistics broken down. And here's a list of the comments. I think these are in order of prevalence. So concerned for herbicide. And I'll admit, there were far more folks that did not want us to use herbicides, but we did get some letters of support for herbicide use. Opposition to clearcutting, though, you know, this is a right-of-way. It's not a clear cut. That, you know, kind of implies that it's a logging project, but I talked about that earlier. Some folks thought we didn't need a right-of-way as wide as 130 feet. That 130 feet came from a Forest Service study from, I think, 2014 that identified that as the optimal width to protect wood pole infrastructure from forest fires. WAPA also did a LiDAR study of their 60 KV line, looking at a cost-benefit analysis. And 130 feet was kind of the sweet spot. You know, beyond that, there were benefits, but diminishing returns. At 130 feet, I believe they identified an 87% reduction in tree power line contacts. We are also doing a sample, obviously, we can't do our whole system, of LiDAR on a portion of our system to see what increasing the 130-foot right-of-way for our distribution feeders will result in. And our guess is more than a 95% reduction. Because keep in mind, WAPA already has an 80-foot easement. We have a 20-foot easement and shorter poles. So we think we'll achieve greater than a 95% reduction in tree power line contacts, which is just a huge safety improvement for our communities. Folks were concerned about loss of mature forest, concerns about impacts to water quality, and concerns about impact to the view shed. You know, all those are legitimate. I just, when I think about those impacts, I think about every time I ride to Redding and look at the visual mature forest water quality impacts from the car fire. And we just can't lose sight that the no-action alternative here is catastrophic wildfire. And yeah, I'm certainly not looking forward to spending millions of dollars on this kind of project, but the alternative is just way, way worse. And next is the schedule. This has changed a little bit. I know I've given a version of this presentation before. So we're hoping to have a draft environmental impact report by September of this year. We're hoping for a preapproval environmental impact report in March of next year and hopefully publishing a final EIR in May of next year. Well, let's get... And if there's any questions, I'll take them.
Okay, yes, we do have some questions in the chat. Paul, thank you for the entire presentation, but thank you also for the lengths to which you and the PUD have gone to not only protect our physical safety, but our financial safety. And I just think there's so much here that does not readily come to mind. I mean, it's your world, you live in it, but these are not things that most of us think about every day. So questions in the chat. And maybe if you want to, maybe stop sharing your screen. I'm not sure if it's my view, but people probably would like to...
Yeah, I'll do a stop, sure. Here we go.
Okay, so the first question, "Could the county's new tub grinder possibly be used to dispose of some of your debris?"
Yeah, I actually thought about that when I read it in the paper. And so it is a possibility. You know, tub grinders can handle large debris. It is a possibility. I'll, you know, prior to seeing that, I guess my primary thought was if we could get cow fire grant money to get the non-merchandiseable material out and get it to Wheeler Brader, that might be the single best option. Because, you know, keep in mind, we're talking about a lot of material and a lot of non-merchandiseable material. As you might know, the big cost is in transporting, you know, green waste that's not merchandiseable. And so getting some cow fire money to help with that would be great. But there is a possibility that tub grinder might be able to be used.
Okay, awesome. That would be, I'd be trying to have yet another use for it. And next question says, "Could cameras be placed along the system to watch for fires?"
So that is actually happening now. There's a... There is a system in California that exists now. And you can log on to this and look at it as the public, but they are putting fire-spotting cameras all over the state. The main issue, as you might imagine, is power and internet connectivity. So they're putting them on mountaintops. So that is underway. I know as a PUD, we were going to fund a couple of those cameras in Trinity County, but actually PG&E beat us to it. So if there isn't, and Jill is a supervisor, if you hear of a need anywhere in Trinity County for one of those cameras, the PUD would probably be willing to donate either money or in-kind services to help facilitate that. So and I think that project is advancing. It's not... I hadn't been on it since last fire season, but I'll probably be on, looking at it again pretty soon, unfortunately. And I'll see how many more cameras have been added to the system.
And so actually, that camera system is something that I've had conversations with Ted MacArthur. I've had him with Randy Moore and recently with Rachel Burkey. And so apparently, there have been 21 sites that were identified as being great locations for those cameras and 10 of them selected. The cameras were donated by somebody that I do not recall who that was at the time. And this has been going on for about 10 years. Travis had volunteered all of the connectivity that would be necessary. And, you know, it got held back for different reasons. So I brought that up with Rachel again. And she said, and let's see, I talked to her three weeks ago. And she said, "Yes, as we speak, that conversation is going on on higher levels." So trusting that that's going to move forward. One of the things that she had said, or somebody had said, was holding it back because they weren't exactly sure who was going to watch the cameras. And I was happy to assure her, we have plenty of internet geeks we don't think we would lack for people to watch them.
Yeah, I think you're right. That's great to hear, actually. And again, if there's any way the PUD can help facilitate that, we'd be happy to.
Okay, great. I'll keep that in mind for the next conversation. And next question says, "By removing the vegetation under the power lines, do you anticipate erosion control problems affecting your towers?"
So that's actually part of the project. It's part of the NEPA and SEQA project. As you might imagine, we can't do this in a fashion that allows sediment to wash into streams. So it won't be a bare-earth easement, which is another advantage actually of using herbicides, because you can use selective herbicides and not allow tall-growing species. And it's another problem with mechanical control is, you know, you basically grind up everything on the ground while you're there. So we don't think erosion is going to be a problem because we're not going to be allowed to have any significant erosion.
Okay. One last question says, "You mentioned wood poles. Is there a plan in the future upgrade to upgrade to more fire-resilient poles, like perhaps steel?"
So we don't have a plan to do that. It's a great question. PG&E is doing that on some of their transmission lines selectively. On the distribution side, it's just cost prohibitive. Not only that, it only solves half the problem. It does provide some protection from a fire that starts from another reason, but it doesn't... It doesn't prevent, if you don't widen the right-of-way, it doesn't prevent trees that fall on the lines from starting a fire. So, you know, I don't know that that's half the problem, but to use as an example, it only fixes half the problem at a really great cost. I know WAPA is looking at steel for their... Ultimately, this is down the road for their 60 KV line, which would be a benefit for us. But the main benefits there are longevity. Because that power line serves 94% of our load, if those transmission voltages, when they have to change out a pole, they have to put Weaverville, Douglas City, Lewiston, and Hayfork all in the dark. So obviously, that doesn't work well. Only hospital in the county. Excuse me. So by going to steel poles, they just last, you know, four or five times as long as wood poles, and you don't have to deal with that problem as often. That's the main reason WAPA is looking to go to steel. It's not really a safety issue. The other problem with steel in our remote areas, we can't get a truck to everything. And steel is difficult and more dangerous to climb because it's a conductor versus the wood poles.
Sure, that makes sense. Something I think we might not readily think of. I didn't think of that. And okay, so I don't see any more questions in the chat. So unless you have any other comments, Paul, and I guess we will wrap it up. Do you have anything else you wanted to just touch on before we finish?
Just to thank you for letting me give the presentation. Just to thank you for letting me give the presentation and, and also I know I put a link up at the end of the, the presentation for additional information. But folks are welcome to call the PUD and talk to me about this if they'd like to.
Okay, excellent, good to know. Well, I just, I just want to say that I feel like it is certainly human nature to just take for granted those things that have become commonplace to our everyday lives. And certainly infrastructure would be at the top of a list of things I know I take for granted. And I feel so blessed that we have the PUD that we do, that we enjoy, the power rates that we do, that we can look toward economic development. Being what it could be here because we've got low rates that are so attractive to people outside of our county. And the fact that you are being so proactive in taking care of us and, and really carrying a heavy burden, I think. In not only planning for this, but also convincing the public of these things that you've learned of that, you know. I, I think that when we look to this just in, with just a light amount of thinking, maybe we think of all the problems and all the things that would hold it back. And you've gone in and looked deeply at those and analyzed the data and come up with what is going to be in all of our favor. And to benefit us not only for the present, but for many years to come. And so I'm, I'm thankful for that, thank you for all that you do. And then to your board, pass on to them, from District Two, at least, and how grateful we are for their work.
Thank you, Jill.
All right, we're gonna close the meeting off tonight then, unless anybody has anything that they want to speak into the meeting. You are more than welcome to do that, you can ask questions, not just in the chat, but if you would like to ask anything, I'll just give a moment for that. Okay, well, we're going to close out tonight then and wish you a good evening, thanks for joining us.
Thanks, Jill.